June 23rd.
All right, it's 9:01, June 23rd. Let's call this regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Jake.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Right, is there a motion for this morning's agenda?
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Good, Jake, any communications received?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Public comments is the portion of our agenda, the public can speak on items not on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments, items not on this morning's agenda? Looking at the board, looking here, seeing none, we'll move on. I would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Motion, we approve today's consent agenda.
Second. Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Great. On the business, we will declare this public hearing open. Say, discussion on disposition of multiple county-owned properties in the area known as Marion County Fairgrounds, and transferring that property to the Marion County Fair Board. Steve, maybe a little background, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
We're connecting with Brian right now.
Is Brian on?
He's trying to connect.
Or Ed, if Ed's on, it doesn't matter, because Ed worked on two, right, Steve?
Yeah.
There we go, he's on, okay.
Hey, good morning, folks. Approximately, seems like almost a year ago, Supervisor McCombs and I think Johnner had some concerns and trying to just try to gather some information about what I'll generally refer to as the racetrack and then the fairgrounds as to who owned it, who didn't own it, who had interest in it, what type of, did it have any type of reversions or just a general understanding of the property. And the more that Mr. McCombs and I dug into it, the more we realized there was a lot of confusion as it related to who had the property, when they acquired it, and whether or not you had, I believe the original person was selling the property to the fairgrounds, and then he passed away, and then his daughters gifted it to the fairgrounds, or gifted it to the county when they no longer owned it. And so, when everything came to be, it looked to me that there was probably two parcels that were still owned by Marion County, the racetrack not being one of them. Although, I think we had a claim, although not a persuasive one, to the track as a whole. We certainly had rights to a little parcel of campground by the horse arena, and then the narrow, narrow strip of land as you're going out of the racetrack toward the Pizza Hut side of the track. So, with that being said, I know Mr. McCombs was contacted by the Fair Board Association that had interest in that property. And I would just note that one of the things that this board asked me to do was try to look at how we have been involved from a liability standpoint in the past. And what I would notice is that it appears to me, as I look back over the last 25 years or so to my predecessors' files, every time there was an incident at the track, Marion County got named in a lawsuit, in addition to the Fair Board and everyone else. Now, there's no question, I think we easily get dismissed out of that lawsuit, but it takes time and/or notification to ICAP, the assignment of outside counsel, and at some point, you just have to wonder, what is the value to the county and the taxpayers to have a parcel we have no benefit to own and only liability? And so, I was tasked with drafting some quick claim deeds, and that's what we've done, and this is the next step through that process. So, there's a little background, Chairman Ramey.
Great, thank you, Counselor, appreciate it. So, Steve, we're at a point now where everything's been drafted, you've met with the Fair Board, everybody's good with the potential disposition of the property, correct?
That is correct, and I don't know if Brian can hear us or not. Brian, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Okay. Alluding to what Ed had spoken to, there were two parcels on there that we thought we actually, Marion County, actually owned. And I noticed that what we're doing today, we're also quit claiming the main racetrack. And I believe, I believe the intent in that is basically just so Marion County, it's a quick claim of any interest in that property. So, I'm confident that all these documents are correct. So, you know, when Ed spoke to the main racetrack itself, I believe that's why we're including it in this quick claim, because I told her a quick claim is, is to quit any interest that may be perceived in that property.
Right. I mean, there are three general things we're attempting to do with this, and Counselor, correct me if I misstate any of these, but number one, we want to clarify ownership
Correct.
of the entirety of that property, because there's been a lot of, from both documents, history, and lore, confusion over that. Second, we want to make sure that, as Ed pointed out, liability is properly assigned. And if, even though we might get easily removed from any potential lawsuits, we don't really control that area. And our taxpayers should not be on the hook from a liability standpoint from an area we really don't have control over directly. And the third thing is just from a clarity standpoint on, as we go forward with insurance and other types of things, it's related to liability, but make sure we're buying appropriate coverage for that which we actually have legal liability for. So, Counselor, is that a fair summary?
Yes, here it is.
Okay. Very good. So, that's been taken care of. Brian, any comments from the Fair Board perspective?
Not at this time.
Okay. Very good.
It's my understanding, Brian, that everyone is on board with this and is comfortable with this transfer, is that correct?
That's correct. We're all in agreement that, for the reasons there stated by Chairman Ramey, that we're all in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good, thanks, Brian, very good. Any other public comments in the public hearing portion? Seeing none, would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make motion, we close the public hearing.
Second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Onto Resolution 2020-51, which is the resolution enacting what we just discussed in the public hearing. Is there a motion or additional discussion on this?
I have no further discussion.
All right. Is there a motion?
Make motion, we approve Resolution 2020-51.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Steve, Ed, thank you, Brian, thank you for working on this, appreciate it very much.
Thank you, guys.
Hello?
I'm assuming the documents are prepared and they will go to the Fair Board for their signatures?
I don't want to speak for Ed, but we'll acquire signatures and get it recorded, and the final will end up with them, I would imagine. Ross from the Attorney's Office prepared a quick claim deed to be filed with the county reporter.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Item number three is a discussion on a elevator contract change order, number 001. So, Jake, Chris, a little background, please.
Sure, um, so over the course of this project, we knew that we would have some contingency for the project because of the age of the building and not having physical access to every aspect of the structure prior to tearing walls out. So, I can give you a real high view of these change orders real quick. Fire sprinkler entrance, originally, we were slated to come in on the west side of the courthouse. Due to the proximity of the transformers and electrical coming into that side, it just wasn't fitting to bring the new water service in. So, we had to shift the water service coming in across the theater, which requires a little bit of work as far as removing one of the panels of the street underground, and then digging up on the south side of the courthouse to put that new service in. So, that's the additional cost there. Aluminum door hardware, that was us physically adding the lockset changes to the north entrance, so it'll be fobbed, which gives us electronic control over when that door's locked and unlocked during the day. Server 131 fire protection, that is the main server room down in Andrew's office. And what we didn't want to do, since we're sprinkling the building, is actually add a sprinkler system inside of the server room. So, that is a waterless system that will just have one storage tank in there, and that'll extinguish any sort of, you know, fire that we'd have in the server room while preserving the electronics, which would be very important to our IT infrastructure. Backflow preventers, currently, our courthouse does not have a backflow preventer. We have four stories worth of water. If there was ever a problem where the square or surrounding area lost water pressure, what a backflow preventer does is we treat our loop system for Legionnaires' disease. It will keep that from actually flushing back into the pipes in the surrounding area, which is going to eliminate liability in the event we ever had a, an issue flowing back into the system. Attic scaffolding, we had some really nice scaffolding put up in the attic so they could put the intumescent paint up. One thing that our attic has really been kind of a pain in the butt for is we have no access points up there. So, we chose to keep that scaffolding for the cost of $4,700. It's already installed. It would have cost us almost three grand to have it taken back out. So, we're basically keeping it in there for a little bit of additional money. Lockset changes, the deduction of 2346 was simply, we had purchased a lot of keyed and push-button locksets for East Elementary School, and we told the contractor, save the money, we can repurpose those before we move back in. So, that's the deduction there. And then, the basement mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, the MEP and ceiling changes, that was one of those walls where we didn't have access to because it was block on both sides. Well, when we actually did the demolition, we found a massive amount of piping and electrical conduit that ran in between those two walls that had to be moved so the elevator shaft could go in. So, that's the MEP and ceiling changes in the basement at $14,006.31. All in all, on a little over 2.2, almost $2.2 million project, so far, we're only $60,000 in change orders, which I think is outstanding considering an 1896 building.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you for the summary. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yeah, we initially had a contingency plan built in anyway, and contingency costs built into that.
We did, yes.
Chris, do you see anything else that we're having to address? I mean, do you feel like, will this be something that we change this and then we have to come back and do again, or?
I would say to that Supervisor Johnner, we planned on about a 10% contingency
Okay.
for a $2.2 million project. I wouldn't see any reason that we wouldn't probably inevitably run into maxing that contingency out. I mean, every floor you go to, there's, it's, it's not massive structural things that we're running into, it's these little things that in any project of this size and scope, you're going to have. I mean, I compare it to you remodeling your house.
Okay.
We've all probably been there and done that, and you run into little things here and little things there. Well, these little things add up, and, you know, $60,000 here, $50,000 there. On a $2.2 million project, 10% contingency, I think there's a good possibility we may stay a little under that contingency, but we're going to be real close to it. And I think the whole intention was when we first had the board vote on this, is we built that 10% contingency in for the, for those reasons stated, so.
Well, we also didn't, we're dealing with some COVID aspects of that now, too, so
That is correct.
of this project, which weren't
You did not have at the time, yeah.
Yep. So, this is something that, I guess I'm just asking this because I don't know. So, we do this, but then, a couple months down the road, we may have to do another. That's what, I mean, these are type things that will be
Very normal, I don't want to speak for Chris, very normal during a project like this to have change orders. There can be many change orders, pluses and minuses. The original contract is signed at that level, and then all the pay changes, or the pay forms and everything come in, set at that level, and this administratively allows that total sum to increase or decrease, whichever the case may be, each time, signed by, that way this owner signs it, the contractor signs it, and the engineer signs it all. So, if there's ever a dispute or something, it's locked, locked. This is administrative, but it also allows the board to
Transparency, too, yep. Great, thank you for that explanation.
Good. Any other discussion? Very good, seeing none, would entertain a motion on this change order.
Make motion to approve the change order on the elevator project.
Second. Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. We have Resolution 2020-50. This is our FY21 budget appropriations. Jake?
Yes, thank you. So, it's the last regular meeting of the fiscal year, which is really bizarre in how fast that has happened. From July 1st, we start a new fiscal year, which feels like we did the budget a long time ago, but this is the final step for that. Annually, the BICode Board has to approve the appropriations for the expenses that were approved in the budget. So, this is the administrative document in front of you. The assumption went in going that it was just at 100% of what you had budgeted. You know, you have flexibility on that if you'd want to change that or not. A couple years ago, we did, I think, a 95 or 98%
Yeah.
on non-benefit stuff. So, basically, operations and then any of the benefits insurance were 100. Last year, you were back at 100%. Just for point of reference, we have basically gotten through all the expenses for the year, and they're, most of the departments are between 90 and 95% of their, anything under on their usage of this year's budget. So,
Great.
have that sheet here, if you'd want to see it or it's available, we can forward to you, because we watch that as we make the last payment of claims and payroll, we can run a report with pending, so. This is at 100%, and if you guys would want to see something different, we can, it's up to you.
Good, thank you, Jake. Now, I think we talked during budget, this was the approach we wanted to employ, still being mindful that even, I don't know, 100% approval, but doesn't mean 100% spent. And I think people have been doing that
Right.
throughout the organization. I think we've had 7%, 8% return on average. Is that about right, Jake?
Yeah, that's pretty close. And of course, the numbers are bigger for some departments than others, so.
But looking at about, you know, an 8%
Yeah.
return, or
Unused budget.
unused budget. So.
Shows responsibility, which is good.
Yeah.
Thank you for all the departments.
Very good. Is there any discussion on this item?
I don't
No, I am in.
Very good, the panel would entertain a motion on Resolution 2020-50.
Make motion, we approve Resolution 2020-50.
Second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Jake.
Yep.
Next is an action discussion on a contract for professional counseling services, cost advisory services. Jake?
Okay, so, this is, every three years, we bring this to you. A little bit of background, and I see that Jeff Lorenz from Cassie, I think I saw him pop on
Yeah.
on there as well. So, he asked if he should be here, and I said, if you can, that's great. I can give you a brief overview of what this is, and Jeff knows all the details, but in essence, the county spends considerable amount of sum of money to help the state, help DHS and do different things of that nature for state functions that we do. An example is like providing courthouse space, or a lot of the stuff, most of the expenses come like stuff that the county attorney's office does in relationship to cases that may deal with human services and things of that nature. So, there's no direct bill to them or anything like that. It's part of the process, it's part of what the county does in its normal operations, but it's assisting in, in those areas. So, many years ago, it's been quite some time, I don't know when, for as long as I've been around, a process was created where you could ask the state back for some return on some of the indirect costs that the county does. It's a very complex, detailed report that takes quite a bit of experience and knowledge to do. And there was a couple companies that started offering counties the services to do so. Jeff has been doing them for some time. He was with a different company before and has been with Cassie for many years. And in essence, what they do is they go through, we send them, it's a lot of it's done electronically now, we send them reports and expenses, they come down. Sometimes, this year with COVID, they didn't come down at all. But they'll do the measurements and go around, and they try and, and they try and dig out these indirect costs that we do. So, we can't get the money back from the state if we don't file this report. The report, the report is quite cumbersome. In essence, we get about a $60,000 return, and Jeff is asking, Cassie is asking for about $6,000 a year.
About 10%.
So, you know, can I tell you that we could do it on our own? You might be able to. We never have, and this is a pretty clean, simple way that just makes it happen, and the quarterly check comes every three months, so. How does that sound, Jeff? Is that okay, or do you want to throw in anything?
Jake, you summed it up great. If you have more questions, I'm certainly here to answer. But, yeah, that was, that was a pretty good summation, Jake, I'm impressed.
Is this typically the price range? I mean
Yeah. We work for 93, we have contracts with 93 other counties.
Okay.
And yes, this is, this price is not increasing. This will actually be your sum eight, nine of the same price for Marion County.
Great, thank you.
I'm assuming this, if we did it ourselves, it'd be very timely.
Initially, for sure.
So, this is not a commentary
It's okay.
on Jeff's group.
I understand where you're going.
You know where I'm going.
Yeah, I do.
That we're going to spend $6,000 to get 63.
Right.
Does that account for all the things we provide for all these state agencies? Not even close?
No.
So, they make a process so absolutely cumbersome to get reimbursed that we have to hire an outside group to actually help us get it done?
It's a federal requirement to have an indirect cost allocation plan.
Yeah, I know, I know what that is.
2 CFR, Part 200, yeah, I understand what you're saying. And, you know, if you had somebody that was, you know, conversant in that chapter on staff, you could do it on your own. It's very cumbersome. We have created software specifically to do it.
Jeff, I get, I get it. I work, I work with the federal government a lot in my, in my other life, so I get it. It's just
Making it difficult.
this can be a lot more efficient. It's a state, it's the state issue more than anything else, but are there any other, before I go off on my, before I hold up my
It's all good.
All right.
The point is, we're not adequately getting reimbursed.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion on this?
Make motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Just waiting for you to say something, though.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
I want to double pause there.
He's waiting, he's just letting me talk.
Resolution 2020-52 is a DOT agreement. Tyler?
Yeah, so, a couple, a month ago, you approved the federal aid, or the funding agreement for the safety grant that we received for this project. We're matching the safety dollars with swap funds rather than on the market, so we need the federal aid swap agreement for the T14 paid shoulder project, so.
Yep.
This is the second swap project. About a month ago, you also approved the first swap project that we will be doing. We did delay the bid letting on this project until January, it was supposed to be July, just to make certain our revenues are staying where they should be, are adequate to fund projects, so.
Okay. Very good, thank you, Tyler. Any discussion, questions for Tyler?
I don't want to
Seeing none, is there a motion on this resolution?
I'm moving to approve Resolution 2020-52.
Second.
Or
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Got to have a little fun with these things, right? All right. We have a discussion point on moving the administrative assistant position to HR. So, we have Marshall working in that role right now, currently reporting to the Board of Supervisors. The recommendation is that, rather than have her directly report to the board, it would be probably more appropriate for her to report directly to Lisa. Still handling a lot, a lot of admin duties, but that will give a better day-to-day management of the position than having us try to do that, so. Is there any discussion?
Sounds logical to me.
Is there a motion?
Yep. Make the motion to approve the administrative assistant position to go under HR.
Second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Thank you, we have items eight and nine, which are appointments. First, Marion County Development Commission, have several here for Carla's board from Pella and At-Large, Pleasantville, and Knoxville. So, Carla, any comments on any of these?
Rob Judkins, who's the first appointment, that would be a reappointment. Rob has currently completed two terms.
Okay.
And that would be his third and final term on the commission before he needs to rotate out. Jamie Peters would be filling the term that was vacated by Kelly Mitchell. She served her maximum nine years, so has rotated off. Traditionally been a workforce HR kind of position on the board with that perspective. Jamie does work for Laila in that role as human resources, and she's a leadership graduate. Jason Bingham from our, kind of our Pleasantville, Meltred, Twin Cedars area of the rural school districts. Jason lives in Pleasantville, he works at Pella Corporation, does own a rental property, multifamily rental property, as well as has perspective as owning a business in Pleasantville. And he was one of our top 10 under 40. The reason that term is slightly longer is otherwise you would have just, it was an unexpired term, so you would have appointed him for a year and then had to reappoint him for his first term. So, that's why it's a four-year term instead of our traditional three-year term. And the last one is Brian Thomas, who lives here in Knoxville, involved in several businesses, works in the kind of financial advisory capacity, and that would be for a traditional three-year term for his first term. Jamie, Jamie, Jason, and Brian would all be first-term appointments.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any discussion, questions for Carla on these appointments?
Carla, how big is your board?
Nine.
Nine, okay.
So, because of the one that Jason had, that's an unexpired term, traditionally, we have three, three a year that would be reappointed, so we have one more because of the unexpired.
And Carla, I don't know if I've ever asked you this in the years that we've worked together, what's the statutory basis for a development permission board?
There is none.
There is none, okay. So, unlike EMA,
Yeah, we don't have
this is a little different.
No, and it will balance as male, female, we do have to abide by that.
Yes, okay, so you got
That, that balances, but that's really our only regulation from a state perspective.
Okay.
The rest of it is all done by bylaws.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Do we have any, do you try to watch, make sure there's no conflict there with relation or anything? You're good here, I mean, regarding appointing these people, I didn't know if there was any connections.
This, yes, so we did have additional application that I did submit to you. There would be a conflict with that, that's why the commission, when the executive, how we kind of work through it is our executive committee meets to look over. People that have expressed interest discuss that, that's a three-person, three of the nine are on the executive committee. They bring that recommendation to the full commission, then that's approved, and then this is the recommendation that the commission is bringing to you. But we did submit to you all the applications we had received.
Okay, great, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions for Carla? Steve?
No, they seem to be a good fit. No, they, they seem to be a good fit.
Very good. Well, I would entertain a motion, we can approve these at, en masse, so is there a motion to approve these commission appointments?
So moved.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Next, we have appointments to the board of adjustment, Dale Miller and Michael, and I'm going to, is, uh.
Kakmarinsky.
Kakmarinsky, I was, I was going to say that. I really was going to say that. Kelly?
Missy.
John?
Yeah, Missy, Missy, yep, this is hers.
What was that, Missy?
I'm here, Mark.
All right, Missy.
So this, um, we had full boards and as of June 1, when the state government went back into session, House File 2512 was signed by the governor, effective immediately, stating that any of our zoning commission and or board of adjustment members that lived in the incorporated areas were no longer able to serve. Actually, how it's worded is that they have to live in the appropriate regulated areas, so they didn't live in the unincorporated Marion County, they were no longer eligible for the boards.
Okay. Okay.
So it was down two board of adjustment members, which are the slots you're filling, and then one zoning commission member, which we still have not got it, got filled yet.
Very good. Well, we, we greatly appreciate the, and we didn't say this with Carla's appointments, but it would include those, we appreciate the service of these individuals on these boards. It's not easy, they're volunteer boards and we appreciate the contribution of our citizens to these boards, absolutely. So, but any discussion on these appointments?
So technically, they're ineligible, but not necessarily unqualified?
Correct, correct. Two of the members I lost had served, one actually was the chairman of the board of adjustments. When she was appointed, she lived out in the county and then moved to Knoxville, so, and then one of my zoning commission members was 10-plus years. We also lost another member who had been in the banking business and real estate, very qualified, but due to this signature by the governor, they became ineligible.
Yeah, so this was through the wisdom of our legislature.
Yes.
I see. Thank you, Missy.
Steve, anything you want to comment about that wisdom?
Thank you, Keisha, for helping me find some members.
I think that said it all.
You want, you want this?
No problem, Missy, thank you.
All right. Is there a motion on these appointments?
Make motion to approve new appointments to the board of adjustments.
Second. Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Combs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Any updates before we move into closed session? Steve?
No, I don't believe so. I think, uh, I'm assuming everything is going fairly well. I haven't had any complaints to speak out.
All right, very good, thank you. Keisha?
Good. Planning and zoning, but so there's always action and movement in Pella, so, you know, but otherwise, yeah, everything's going well.
Yeah, the only thing I would give an update to more broadly is that with COVID still being front and center, it has changed the dynamic of a lot of our boards. I think people are still trying to find their sea legs about how to meet, when to meet. By Zoom, it's obvious, not a lot of in-person or not as much in-person, so I think that's changed the nature of how we meet and how we do these things and probably will for at least the rest of the year as we get through this, so, anyway. Something to keep in mind, very good. All right, with that, would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion. Go on closed session.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Take five. All right, we're, oh, is there a motion to reopen, reconvene?
I make motion, we reconvene into open session.
Spencer? Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, so we are back in open session. The results from open session on, or from closed session, item one, really no action taken, an update provided by council on that matter. Second item discussed in closed session, the board needs to take action to authorize ICAP to proceed based on their recommend, recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Very good. And with that.
Make motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, we are adjourned.